Good evening. Thank you all for being here. We appreciate you spending your evening with us. I would like to call this Madison County School Board meeting back to order on April the 15th, 2024 at 7:06. We have a couple business items that we have to take care of and then we will get started with the fun stuff. The first item we need to do is to certify the closed session we were just in. So if somebody would like to read, yep.
Yeah, I'll read it. Whereas the Madison County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, therefore be it resolved, the Madison County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Okay, we have a motion. We need a second.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Patterson, will you call? Roll, please.
Mr. March.
I certify.
Mr. Sheets.
I certify.
Mr. Wingate.
I certify.
Mrs. Wood.
I certify.
Mrs. Collier.
I certify. All right, our next agenda item is the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we will have a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, our next business item is to approve the personnel matters and addendum for April the 15th, 2024, to include appointments, substitute appointments, retirements, resignations, camp unikite personnel, 2024, 2025 classified reappointments, and 2024, 2025 licensed reappointments. And I will open the floor for that motion.
Motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve. We need a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries. The next agenda item is our consent agenda for April the 15th, 2024. That includes the school board minutes from March the 11th, April operating expenses, April All-In Virginia Fund, April CIP expenses, April food services expenses, expenditures as of March the 31st. I will open the floor for that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the April 15th, 2024 consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion. We need a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries. All right, our next agenda item, soon as the computer works, is the Senior of the Month. The Senior of the Month program showcases a graduating senior, one each month during the school year, and recognizes them for their academics, extracurricular activities, and their service to others. Each Senior of the Month will be recognized monthly at each school board meeting with a presentation of certificate from the school board. At the end of the school year, we will once again honor the seniors of the month, and then each senior will in turn recognize the educator that had the greatest influence on their education while in Madison County Public Schools. Ms. Winham, are you here? Yes.
Good evening. I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask Annie Herman to join me up here, please. You have a teammate on the school board, too. Doesn't that, isn't that an honor? Your captain's getting an award right now. All right, so good evening. It is my pleasure to introduce Annie Herman, a truly remarkable student who is being recognized as Madison County High School Senior of the Month. Annie's infectious joy and unwavering commitment to our core values have been evident throughout her entire high school career, not just this past month. In fact, when I first met Annie when she was a freshman, I probably could have at that time nominated her as a Senior of the Month then because she's truly, stands out of the pack. She's mature, she's inclusive of everyone, she's loving, studious, everything that you would want is what you see in Annie and is what I would want for my own daughter. Annie's involvement in co-curricular and extracurricular activities is impressive, and it's no surprise that she has earned distinguished academic honors. However, what truly sets Annie apart is her genuine disposition, her fun-loving nature, and unwavering integrity. These qualities make her an exceptional role model for her peers and a true asset to our school community. Annie is an outstanding student and is all set to graduate with honors from Madison County High School and Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School. Apart from this, she has also earned certification as a nursing assistant and patient care technician. Mrs. Kemp, MCHS nursing instructor remarked that Annie was a leader in both the classroom and clinical settings. Annie was always empathetic and caring while caring for her patients. She adapted well to their needs and was innovative in her approach to promote and open communication with them. She's fearless in the clinical setting and would be the first to try something new. She has dealt with difficult nursing procedures, wound care, and irritable patients with a lot of competence and compassion. Mrs. Kemp went on to say that Annie is a competent and compassionate future nurse. How lucky for all of us. Annie has been an active member of the student government throughout the year, always ready to lend a helping hand to those in need, behind the scenes with our Facebook and social media, Instagram posts, like being innovative just to get kids connected and involved here at school. Her small acts of kindness and contributions have not gone unnoticed by the MCHS community. We and I are very extremely proud of her accomplishments and look forward to seeing all the wonderful things she will achieve in the future. Congratulations, Annie.
Congratulations, Annie.
And our girls soccer team is having a great season and had a win tonight and are gonna be a competitive force, so come watch them.
Congratulations, Annie. Our next agenda item is the Employee of the Month, and I'm unsure.
Dr. Reese is gonna come forward to present our Employee of the Month who comes from Waverly.
Good evening. Just a little bit, sorry. Waverly Owl proudly announces Ms. Linda Lampman as the Madison County Public School Employee of the Month for April. Ms. Linda, if you'll come up, please. She does not like the spotlight at all. You are here. I'm so glad you're here. Ms. Linda has been serving as Waverly Owl school nurse for five years, so we've been there together the whole time. It's tough to describe a typical day for Ms. Linda as her work requires her to be ready for any situation. Her responsibilities include administering med education, attending to countless cuts and bruises incurred on the school playground, providing mental health support for students, offering a change of clothes, giving a positive word of encouragement, and even a mint before returning to class. Additionally, Ms. Linda collaborates with local health agencies to organize annual screenings for our students, which is critical to ensure regular health care. Apart from all this, Ms. Linda is also an educator. She communicates health concerns and offers support methods to students, their families, and staff. She also trains school staff regarding specific student medical requirements. Ms. Linda plays an essential role in our school community, and many students, many students, visit her office on any given day. Ms. Linda, we are grateful for all your work to support our students and staff. We recognize the patience, time, and compassion you exhibit while dealing with various challenges. Thank you for enhancing our children's learning environment and strengthening their lives. Your impact is both felt and appreciated. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Thank you for all you do. And I believe now we are in for a treat from our Waverly Owl Singers.
Good evening, members of the school board and distinguished guests. We are the Waverly Singers from Waverly Owl. We have a 63 membership. We have only 37 people here tonight. I believe I counted right. I think, no, maybe 41, sorry. But they came in with me and we are delighted to be here. What an honor to represent our school and to be asked to sing for you tonight. We are doing our show on Thursday, and it's called Dazzled by Disney, and we are delighted to be here to share with you some of those songs. The Waverly Singers actually did not begin until 2011. The name changed from the Waverly Chorus. When I first came on board, a few years later, we had a group of people in 1995 that began with the singing of the Waverly Chorus. We sang Christmas time and springtime. We gave concerts twice a year. We actually were invited to Graham's Memorial to present when we had 125 students in our chorus. As I said, the name changed in 2011, and we became the Waverly Singers. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce to you the Waverly Singers singing a portion of our show.
Zippity-doo-dah, zippity-ay. My, oh my, what a wonderful day. Plenty of sunshine heading my way. Zippity-doo-dah, zippity-ay. Mister Bluebird on my shoulder. It's the truth, it's actual. Everything is satisfactory. Zippity-doo-dah, zippity-ay. Wonderful feeling, wonderful day.
Salakadu-la, mitsukabuu-la, bibbidi-bobbidi-boo. Put 'em together, what have you got? Bibbidi-bobbidi-boo. Salakadu-la, mitsukabuu-la, bibbidi-bobbidi-boo. It'll do better, believe it or not, bibbidi-bobbidi-boo. Salakadu-la beans, a mitsukabuu-la brew. For the drink of your heart that does the job, there's bibbidi-bobbidi-boo. Salakadu-la, mitsukabuu-la, bibbidi-bobbidi-boo. Put 'em together, what have you got? Bibbidi-bobbidi, bibbidi-bobbidi, bibbidi-bobbidi-boo. Can't even say a love goodbye. I'm late, I'm late, I'm late. (Singing) Super Cala Fragilistic, Expialidocious. Even though the sound of it is something quite atrocious. If you say it loud enough, you'll always sound precocious. Super Cala Fragilistic, Expialidocious. Umdu-lulul, umdu-lai. Cause I was afraid to speak when I was just a lad. Me father gave me nose and speaking told me I was bad. But then one day I learned a word that safely aching nose. The biggest words you ever heard, and this is how it goes. Oh, Super Cala Fragilistic, Expialidocious. Even though the sound of it is something quite atrocious. If you say it loud enough, you'll always sound precocious. Super Cala Fragilistic, Expialidocious. Umdu-lulul, umdu-lai. Cause I was afraid to speak when I was just a lad. Me father gave me nose and speaking told me I was bad. But then one day I learned a word that safely aching nose. The biggest words you ever heard, and this is how it goes. Oh, Super Cala Fragilistic, Expialidocious. Even though the sound of it is something quite atrocious. If you say it loud enough, you'll always sound precocious. Super Cala Fragilistic, Expialidocious. Umdu-lulul, umdu-lai. Cause I was afraid to speak when I was just a lad. Me father gave me nose and speaking told me I was bad. But then one day I learned a word that safely aching nose. The biggest words you ever heard, and this is how it goes. Oh, Super Cala Fragilistic, Expialidocious. Even though the sound of it is something quite atrocious. If you say it loud enough, you'll always sound precocious. Super Cala Fragilistic, Expialidocious. Umdu-lulul, umdu-lai. Cause I was afraid to speak when I was just a lad. Me father gave me nose and speaking told me I was bad. But then one day I learned a word that safely aching nose. The biggest words you ever heard, and this is how it goes. Oh, Super Cala Fragilistic, Expialidocious. Even though the sound of it is something quite atrocious. If you say it loud enough, you'll always sound precocious. Super Cala Fragilistic, Expialidocious. Super Cala Fragilistic, Expialidocious. Kick your knees up, step in time. Kick your knees up, step in time. Never need a reason, never need a rhyme. Kick your knees up, step in time. Round the chimney, step in time. Round the chimney, step in time. Never need a reason, never need a rhyme. Round the chimney, step in time. Laugh like a birdie, step in time. Laugh like a birdie, step in time. Never need a reason, never need a rhyme. Round the chimney, step in time. Kick your knees up, step in time. Kick your knees up, step in time. Never need a reason, never need a rhyme. Kick your knees up, step in time. (Singing) The seaweed is always greener if somebody else is late. You dream about going up there, but that is a big mistake. Just look at the world around you, right here on the ocean floor. Such wonderful things surround you. What more is you looking for? Under the sea, under the sea. Dawn is better, down where it's wetter. Take it from me. Among the shorelands, we're all day. Out in the sun, they slay away. While we're devoting, full time, we're floating, under the sea. Down here, all the fish is happy, as often the ways they roll. The fish on the land ain't happy, they stack us in the bowl. The fish in the bowl is lucky, they improve our worsted fate. One day, when the boss gets hungry, guess who's lonely on the plate? Under the sea, under the sea. No honey peaches, cry us and eat us, and drink a sea. We're underland, but love to cluck. Under the sea, we off the hook. We don't have the troubles, life is the bubbles, under the sea. We got no troubles, life is the bubbles, under the sea. (Singing) Winnie the Pooh, Winnie the Pooh. Tubby little tubby all stuck with Fluffy. Winnie the Pooh, Winnie the Pooh. Little little silly old bear. Winnie the Pooh, Winnie the Pooh. Tubby little tubby all stuck with Fluffy. Winnie the Pooh, Winnie the Pooh. Little little silly old bear. (Singing) When you wish upon a star, makes no difference who you are. Anything your heart desires will come to you. If your heart is in your dreams, though it blesses to its tree. When you wish upon a star, her dreamers do. They disguise, she brings to those who love. The sweet book filled with love, a secret mommy. Like a bolt out of the blue, a sudden it sees you through. When you wish upon a star, her dream comes true. (Singing) Together, together, together everyone. Together, together, come on, let's have some fun. Together, together, each other every time. Together, together, come on, let's do this right. We're all in this together. Once we've done, and we've learned, we're all stars, and we see that. We're all in this together. Once we've seen, and we've tried, and we've found, and we've taken. We're all in this together. Once we've seen, and we've tried, and we've found, and we've taken. Now some ears everywhere, make your hands up in the air. That's the way we do it, listen to it, come on, everyone.
Let's give a Vamala round of applause. And Ms. LaDain, we appreciate you. This lady taught me, y'all.
Me too.
She's been around for a long time, and we appreciate her.
Okay. Wow, that was amazing. So, our next agenda item is public comments. We welcome public comments. Anyone who wishes to address the board should come up to the podium and state your name and the area of the county that you live in, and you will have three minutes, I believe they're getting us a timer, yes? A three-minute timer, and that will be your, you can keep track of your minutes. Anybody like to address the board?
Lisa Davis-Locus-Dale. I hadn't planned on being here tonight, and I'll be honest. After babysitting of, what, five or six-month-old overnight last night, and a three-year-old today, and then went out and fed 40 cats for different colonies, I was sitting there and I was having a glass of wine, I'll be honest, out on my porch. And then I said, you know, I could skip this. And then said, nope, I looked at everybody up there, and if you can dedicate your time away from your family and give so much, there's no reason why I can't finish the wine and then come here tonight. So, I wanted to give you that story, because you all bring, each one of you bring something different here. We may not all agree, you know me up here, but, but you bring something different, and I need to be here to say I appreciate that. But a couple of things. IT issues, I'm just now getting smarter on that, this artificial intelligence too. And I don't know how much we're getting involved more, but the more that I read is, it seems like it's so easy to just click and get an essay together, and with biases and misinformation and a lot of potential for plagiarism. You know, it just seems like it's too quick, and I just hope you all keep an eye on that and teach them the right way of doing it. That just scares me. I also read, which we all know, one of them is the biggest problem, they said one of the biggest problems facing schools that they, a lot of, it's written on that says it's more critical than learning. That's the loss of, is chronic absenteeism, and you all know it. I hear you talk it all the time, but boy, is it in the forefront. I want to let you know that just keep up with your, your high standards. Not everybody agrees with you at times. I'm down there, even when I learned from the superintendent how bad it was on, on counting, what counts as absentee, I was down there in Richmond. I mean, I'll, I'll bring it forward, and I'm also always reviewing things online, but thank you all. This is like, it's winding down this year, but I really appreciate everything that you all have done and, and work on the tough questions and the tough concerns, and when people are battling up there against you all, and deep down, we know it's, well, I'll leave it at that, but you hold your own, and, and it's for the sake of the students and the teachers and everybody else, so thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the board?
Devlin Alfonso Radiant. First, I want to be clear, we celebrate Christmas in my home. I've attended Christmas Eve Mass, I'm a baptized Episcopalian.
Ma'am, could you just talk, I just have a hard time hearing you talking to my friend. Thank you, sorry.
First, I want to be clear that we celebrate Christmas in my home. I've attended Christmas Eve Mass, I'm a baptized Episcopalian, I am not anti-religion, but I am anti-state endorsed religion. I read the proposed changes to language regarding school breaks and take issue with this public school board endorsing Christianity over other holidays. We have many teachers and students in our community who are not Christian. Winter break includes all of these community members, whereas Christmas break leaves out Jewish, Muslim, Jehovah's Witness, among many other community members. Why aren't you proposing we celebrate Hanukkah break or Kwanzaa break? Kwanzaa actually aligns quite well with the actual dates of winter break, as it's celebrated from December 26th until January 1st. I don't see any board members proposing that as the holiday to acknowledge, likely because none of you celebrate that as your particular holiday. I suspect it would be offensive to you to refer to winter break as Kwanzaa break, because you celebrate Christmas during that time. Does that make the problem clear? You know, we're not including everyone here. I understand that members of the school board have their personal religions, and it's perfectly fine for anyone and their personal lives to call winter break Christmas break if they choose to. However, a public federally funded school district cannot endorse one religion over another. Supreme Court decisions have stated that public schools are limited to celebrating holidays that have both secular and religious significance, not one or the other. Christmas is not secular. Legally, we could have winter break, but not Christmas break. We could have spring break, but not Easter break. Legal precedent does not support your policy, and neither does basic human decency. Please leave winter break alone and focus on other issues, issues like budget shortfalls, teacher retention, student well-being. Will we attract Jewish teachers with this stance? Will the Jewish teacher look at our schedule and say, oh, I want to look at this school that only does Christmas? What about kids who are bullied for wearing head covering due to Muslim beliefs? Does this help them? No. This helps one group and one group only. So please put your personal theology aside and focus on the working in the best interest of the diverse range of students and teachers who rely on you. of the diverse range of students and teachers who rely on you.
Karina Barden, Wolf Towne. We are in Madison County, Virginia, less than half an hour from James Madison's home, where you can stand in his personal library, and if you ask a subject matter expert there, they will explain in depth what our First Amendment rights meant to Madison and his thoughts on religious freedom. We are less than an hour from Thomas Jefferson's home, where you can stand in his personal library, and if you ask a subject matter expert, they will tell you all about his thoughts on the separation of church and state. We are an easy day trip from the National Archives in Washington, DC, where we can see our most sacred national documents up close and personal, and where exhibit after exhibit shows how various groups of American citizens have advocated and worked hard to secure the same freedoms that white Christian men have been granted. I trust all those sources. I do not trust all of you. You are here for the educational needs of the students not to proselytize them. You are here to do something about bullying, teacher retention, low test scores, and instead we are having a ridiculous debate about what to call the break in between semesters, and you are unconstitutionally favoring one religious group over everybody else. Not all students celebrate Christmas. We don't know the actual date of the birth of Christ. Meanwhile, Yule, celebrated on solstice, will fall this year on December 21st. Hanukkah will begin on December 25th. Kwanzaa begins on December 26th. It's possible I've missed some, and if so, I apologize. Not all students celebrate Christmas. Some students do not celebrate any holidays, but all students deserve to feel included by their public school board.
Good evening. I'm Russell Byber from Brightwood. And again, I'd like to echo Mrs. Davis's comments about thanking you, showing our appreciation to the school board for the work that you do. And I just want to say that traditionally in America, we have been a Christian nation. We have held to the ideals of the Word of God traditionally. The First Amendment in non-establishment of religion was provided so that everyone could have a part in free conscience to worship the way they chose. The reason why the various religions are permitted to worship as they so choose, or choose not to, is because of that. Here in Virginia, multiple Baptist preachers were imprisoned, 46 Baptist preachers were imprisoned for preaching the Gospel of Jesus Christ when Virginia was an Anglican colony. Many Baptist preachers paid the price, went to jail, suffered persecution, so that we could have, in Virginia, the right to worship as we choose. The various religions have our Baptist preacher forefathers and our political leaders that they have the privilege to worship as they choose. But traditionally, America's been a Christian nation. We celebrate the Christian holidays because that's been the majority of our land. And majority plays an important part in our political system. And so, I don't disagree with someone else's right to celebrate as they choose to, but let's not tear down America and what she's been in order to create a godless society. Thank you.
Hi, I'm not prepared, like everybody else is. But it's always so interesting. Oh, I don't, I think I've been here before. I read the opening statement of the Declaration of Independence, which says, "When in the course of human events..."
Can you state your name?
Oh, sorry, I'm Christina. I'm ticking on the timer, though. "When in the course of human events, it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands that have bound them to another, and to assume among the powers of the earth this separate yet equal station to which the laws of nature and nature's God entitle them. A decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare their causes which impel them to separation. Then it says, 'We hold these truths to be self-evident.'" So when I read the laws of nature and nature's God, I called the Supreme Court and I asked them, "What are these laws of nature that you're talking about, since you hold our nation's laws?" And they hung up on me. They've continued to hang up on me for six years, and so I have deeply been researching the roots of our nation. We are not a Christian nation. That's actually untrue. We are a nation under the Creator of creation. And I talked to the Board of Directors at the, I'm nervous, the Virginia Board of Education. Her and I went back and forth. I'm like, why don't we teach the opening statement of the Declaration of Independence in public school? And she said, "We do." I said, "We don't." She said, "We do." I said, "We don't." I said, "Okay, well, how about I propose that we stop teaching in English that the opening statement of any speech or document contains any relevant points or key information?" And she said, "Good morning, let's have a conversation." So what I found out is there is no bylaws in Virginia that says that we cannot teach the opening statement of the Declaration of Independence. However, what I have found is that opening statement is actually a reference to a treaty with the Six Nations, and they have something called the Great Law of Peace. Our Constitution is modeled after this Great Law of Peace. It's the original democratic structure. I have documents I have pulled from the archives from Monticello. I could talk about this forever. But these kids up here singing about being under the stars and that we're all in this together, like, I kind of feel like the kids should sing every time before an open school board meeting, because it really brings us back to the point, and that's our kids. And I feel like this opening statement and the laws of nature and what is that? I mean, our Supreme Court was run on astrological enlightenment. Benjamin Franklin was so impressed by the Six Nations and their democratic structure that he started his printing company, so that he could start printing what they had to say. So, one, this is completely removed from our, "I've talked to the federal, I've talked to the state," and now they've pushed me into the local. And so it's, so when I hear things that I'm like, that's not true. I've been studying this like a scholar for six years, one sentence, and what it... Thank you for your time. But my point, my point is, is can we get to nature? Can we get these kids like outside and feed them well and basic stuff? I know it's beeping. I didn't mean to go all this. Thank you for listening. Thank you.
Would anyone else?
Mike Sharman from the Novum area of Madison. So we learned from the Waverly Singers that we're all in this together, one nation under God. And if anybody doesn't agree with that, then just hand me all the money in your pocket, because it says it right on that. But you know, for half of my life, I was not a Christian. All of my life, I've absolutely loved Christmas. Christmas is one of those cultural ties that binds us together. Of course, as a Christian now, I appreciate the eternal significance of it. But frankly, I could have cared less about that for half my life, because I wasn't a Christian. But I loved Christmas, I loved Christmas traditions, and by, in the whole time I was in school, whether it was public school or college or law school, we had Christmas break. We didn't have winter break. I went to a public school in Fairfax County, where a significant part of our school was Jewish, and we enjoyed it. Mr. Cohen, one of my favorite teachers, enjoyed it. When I was in the choir, we did Christmas songs. Did you notice they mentioned that the Waverly Singers used to sing at Christmas time? It wasn't they sang at wintertime, they sang at Christmas time. So I'm just giving you some notes here, cultural notes, that show that by asking you to have this be Christmas break, you're doing nothing more than just recognizing American, and in fact, global culture. Start off with, there's 429 Hallmark Christmas movies. Who knew that you could watch a year and a half and never repeat Hallmark Christmas movie? It feels like they repeat, but yeah. So Hallmark starts their Christmas season in October. So last month, it was mentioned that, well, it's only Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. No, Christmas goes on a really long time for Hallmark, and it's, Hallmark's the number one channel in November and December because it has Christmas movies, and we as a culture enjoy Christmas movies. There's songs. Well, we had a whole lot of the Disney songs, a lot of other really enjoyable ones, but you know, the most common track, most common genre of all music is Christmas music. I was just floored by this. There's 914,047 Christmas tracks, separate recordings of Christmas songs on Spotify and Echo Nest, 180,660 unique songs created by 63,711 unique artists. But guess who's number one? Bing Crosby with White Christmas. He's, White Christmas, Bing Crosby's White Christmas, is in 2,196 albums. So Walmart doesn't think Christmas is only two days. And y'all can read the rest, and thank you for your vote. Appreciate it.
I'm Carol Shirey. I live in Madison. Carol Shirey, S-H-I-R-E-Y, like Shirley without the L. I think many good points have been made here. I agree, Christmas is the major holiday over that break. No child is not going to know that's not the Christmas holiday. The gifts will be out in stores at Halloween. Everybody talks about it. There are trees, there's money and gifts and things that are collected for people, and all of that is wonderful. But that, to me, leaves the other ones out even more. I appreciate people who love their religion and want to share it with everyone else. But we are a country, and hopefully, just a society, that honors everyone, every child. When I looked at those children, I wondered how many of them do not practice a Christian religion? Do we want them to feel even more isolated? This certainly isn't going to help them with their schoolwork. It isn't going to help them want to come to school, so it's not going to help with our truancy problem. This is just going to make them feel more isolated and not accepted. And I don't think that's what we want to do as a community, no matter what our religion may be. Christmas, like every day of the year, should be about loving and caring and compassion. And even people who are not Christian will point out that what they like about the Christmas season is that people are more caring and compassionate. I think we should show that no matter what our religion is, we can be caring and compassionate and love every child, accept every child's family, and not do anything that makes them feel like they are an outsider. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the board? Okie doke. We will move on to board comments. Board members, do you guys have anything to say? Mr. Chief?
I have a lot to say, but I don't know if I should say it now or wait until discussion around the vote. I will respond to one thing, though. As the young lady was mentioning the Declaration of Independence, she conveniently stopped just before it said that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights. So, nature, Creator, kind of falls in the same boat. But I do have a lot of notes here. I think I'll hold them until we have discussion over the vote.
Thank you. I just want to respond a little bit, because I think it's admirable for folks to come out and, can you all hear me? Echo in here, can you all hear me? Okay. Sorry, I'll try to talk better into it. It's so admirable to come out, and you know, we all have families, and to come out, and so and so this is a ridiculous debate, I couldn't disagree more. I mean, it's important, and the fact that you're here and that we're here and talking about it means it's important. You know, it means something. Words mean something, language means something, it conveys something. I mean, what you said, ma'am, is, you know, is there some truth to that? You know, what we do matter, you know? And so I think it's not a ridiculous debate, it's a debate well worth having. And so, just a couple of thoughts about it. And I want to respond now, because I want to respect you all coming out here, and so we put this kind of board comment in here to make sure that as the evening goes on and on, you all don't have to miss out our response to your good comments. So a couple of things I'd say. This is, you know, the renaming is obviously a little bit controversial. I think we had a survey and had 160 or something, 150 some, which is a lot, right? A lot more than many, so many people care about it, right? And split, and I mean, a lot of strong feelings on both sides. So it's controversial. And so, I think when, you know, we're so fortunate to live in a democratic republic where the law helps us to sort out these controversies. And I think the law is a huge help in this case. It's a safe harbor, in a lot of ways, settled law is. And so when we, I was thinking about this, and I was thinking about, you know, it's not really fair to the committee for them to do this work, and then we come and ask for changes, and so I thought, we really ought to have some policy that helps the committee not go back and forth so many times, makes it more work for them. And I was, so I was thinking about a revision of the policy, and I was thinking about, you know, what we really ought to look at is the law. And so I went to Virginia Law, and I think the answer to our little controversy is in Virginia Law. I want to read to you, it's in section 2.23300, 2.23300, called "Legal Holidays in Virginia", and it's real short. The law reads, quote, "It is the policy of the Commonwealth of Virginia to fix and set aside certain days in the calendar year as legal holidays for the people of Virginia. In each year, the following day is designated as legal holidays," and it lists 12 holidays. These are, this is not my opinion, it's not my personal preference, this is a legal holiday. New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Day, George Washington Birthday, Memorial Day, Juneteenth, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, and Yorktown Victory Day, Election Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas. So 12 holidays, 12 holidays have been established by Virginia Law. That law, the safe harbor of it is, is that it respects, it respects the will of the majority. You know, we live in this country where people are elected and go to Richmond and make, and make policy and make laws, and establish that, and it protects the rights of the minority, because we ensure that it's constitutional. That's gone through lots and lots of years of review. In 1999, the state of Indiana was sent before the Supreme Court, because they had Good Friday holiday as a state holiday. The Supreme Court said it was constitutional, and today in Indiana, Good Friday is a state holiday. So it passes constitutional muster, and it also respects the will of the majority. So I think, I think it's super important to think about the message it sends to people by changing it from Christmas to winter holiday. We call all 11 of these 12 holidays by their, by their name, Memorial Day, or Veterans Day, or Thanksgiving, but we're going to say, you know what? We're not going to call Christmas Christmas holiday, even though it's a legal holiday. It's not Wingate's idea, not anybody's, it's a state, Virginia's idea, right? And so what message are we sending? We're saying that we're going to discriminate against religious people in that one holiday... We're saying that we're going to discriminate against religious people in that one holiday that is a state holiday, we're going to discriminate against them. That's kind, that seems to me to be a terrible message, to ignore, to ignore that, the idea of discrim, and discriminate against people. Every one of these 12 holidays, I think, deserves to be marked by their proper name and celebrated for its place in our culture, in our history, in our tradition. That's not my idea, that's state law, and there's a Virginia, Virginia code for it. And I think, I think that if you don't like that, if people don't like that, then we have a process for that. I would contact your state representative. Delete Christmas from the state holiday list, delete Thanksgiving from the state holiday list if you wanted to do that, right? So I think, I mean, that's, that's, that's the, that's the process. We live in a democratic republic, not my list, not my list. Virginia's schools are under state law, and that's what we, Virginia Department of Education, so that's what I'm talking about, is Virginia law. So I don't want to go into the policy yet, but I did want to respond because I think that's, that's the key thing, is that, is that, you know, this is not a personal preference in any, in any case. When I talk about the, the policy, we'll see it's a compromise about what's not, what holidays that are not state law, but it's clear that it's constitutional to call something Christmas. I think it's going to be such a shame if we got rid of all the names and had like Holiday One, Holiday Two, Holiday Three, Holiday Four, or if we just discriminated against Christmas. That just seems to be inconsistent. So I'll talk more about the, the policy, but that's my sort of response to some of the, some of the comments to you. And I do thank you, I mean, I think it's awesome that people are here and caring about it, it's a good sign, so thank you.
Mr. Marcus, do you have anything?
Well, when we brought this up, I was kind of curious to what goes on around us. And so the first thing I thought about was when I was still coaching at Culpeper, and we moved districts, and we moved into the Cedar Run, which is predominantly Prince William County. And we had our first game moved to a Thursday night, and I didn't really understand why. They have this holiday called Rosh Hashanah, which I'd never really heard of, I got educated on that. And then currently, the Prince William School Calendar, September 15th, holidays, schools officially closed in observance of Rosh Hashanah. September 25th, schools, offices closed for Yom Kippur. And so it is not abnormal for schools to recognize or even close for specific holidays. Because this even goes into Fairfax County is the same thing. And then when they get to Christmas, Kwanzaa, Passover listed, Easter break is listed, and so is Good Friday. So it is not uncommon practice. Why? Because the words of a calendar represent the actual overall makeup of the community. And if we had like a heavy Jewish population, I could see us having a Yom Kippur, very easily added on to it, just like Prince William does. And knowing that Prince William is probably one of the most diverse, diverse education environments in the state, and that's a fact, I don't think they have a problem getting in Jewish or Muslim teachers. I don't think it's an issue to get in Christian teachers. They have teachers, they have students, and they do a successful job of getting both those things done. And so it's not abnormal, it's, it's there. And so this kind of reflects what has been a history of Madison for a long time. I mean, even all the way back to Hebron Church. For those who aren't familiar with the history of that, you should take a look at it. But thank you for your comments, I appreciate the difference. I love the, the thought process and being able to like digest some things, but it's, it's not uncommon, and it's everywhere.
I'd like to echo everybody, which is thank you guys for coming out, thank you for talking. I know I'm the new face on the school board. One of the things that I would just kind of put food for thought out there for everybody is that as the only new member of the school board this year, last year this board approved the calendar stating that it was winter break. And so I know, like, we, we talk a lot about tradition, we talk a lot about belonging, we talk a lot about chronic absenteeism, and we talk about all, all these issues that are issues in our school, that we want our kids to belong, we want our kids to be here, and we want our families to be connected, and we want all of this kind of, we want Madison to be what Madison is supposed to be, right? Like, and, and the fact, and I think that the concern is not so much renaming Christmas for Christmas. If, I asked my children today, I was like, so what do you call that break after, after, at the end of the year? And my youngest, who is much more religious than my oldest, is like, I don't care what you call it, I'm still going to call it Christmas break, right? Like, and that was kind of his thing. My oldest, who is not religious, is very much like, Mom, like, like, it's, it's winter break, it's hard when it's Christmas. And I think, I think the concern, I guess, that I echo, I looked at these comments, we had so many wonderful people fill out this survey. Oh, two-thirds of the, the people that filled out the survey said that they wanted it to be winter break. And, and that is, I mean, that's the majority, and I know that, like, being a democratic republic, we don't do majority, right? Like, that's kind of why we have, have the things the way that we do. But it is something to kind of consider if we do have this opportunity to continue to maintain being able to support so many people, like, and, and still, while still respecting the fact that, yes, we are breaking over Christmas. Like, yes, we go to Christmas services in my house, and that is something that's very, very important to us. Our religion is very important to us. That book down there is very important to me, right? Like, that is the number one thing in my life. But I think it's really looking at the fact that last year we called it winter. Last year that was okay, I wasn't here, I admit, I was not one that went to lots of school board meetings, I watched them online, I don't know what debate was had at that point in time. I respect you all for everything that you have done, and so, so hard, I respect you all. But last year it was okay, what changed? So I'd like to, to ask yourselves, like, what changed from last year that this year, you know, we were driving down the Christmas road? And again, thank you guys for all of your comments today.
I would say, I mean, I think like any, I mean, new, when a new person come, I mean, when I came on the school board, I think, you know, I was like drinking out of a fire hose sometimes, and so I think what changed is you get, you just sort of, you, you learn in certain things, kind of, you want to, you want to make adjustments on or something, and I, you don't, you don't recognize everything you want to do right away, I think. I think that's what changed in my mind, you know? I realized, and we, you know, realized this is a good, you know, good idea. So I think it's a never-ending process of learning, probably, so I think that's, in my mind, that's what changed. And I'd say, I just respond a little bit. The reason it's important, so I have, I have a child in school. I, you know, I, obviously, people know what, know what I am, and I'm a conservative, I'm a conservative guy, you know, everybody knows that about me, and they're made a, never made a, never made any bones about that. And, and people sometimes ask me, you're, you're sending your kid to school, is that, are you comfortable with that? You know, are you comfortable being a conservative Christian guy, are you comfortable doing that? There are concerns about that, you know, that people bring to me. Is he going to be okay in terms of, in his belief and stuff? And there are a lot of people who, who have left, left public school for that reason. And I think when we, we've got to be careful with our messaging, you can't, you know, changing it to winter break carries a message, whether you think it does or not. And let me read a comment, one of the, one of the people in the survey said, and I want you to kind of think about this comment, it's, I think it's a danger. The person said, "We should definitely keep religion out of public schools. For those of you that want your kids to believe in Christianity, send them to a Christian school." That, that comment, that comment is, that's, that indicates the danger of that kind of messaging. We don't want Christian students to flee public schools, you know? And if you're, and, and so, don't think, don't think that by naming it winter break, that you're not sending a message, because we are. We're sending a message that we're going to discriminate against Christians because in state law it says Christian, it says, it says Christmas, but we're going to take that out because we can't say that word. So it does, whether or not, whether or not we think it does, it sends a message, and I've heard lots of times. So just to be careful about that, and it's a reality, I think we've got to tackle.
So, I, I mean, just kind of in response to that, like, again, I told you, like, that book is important to me. That book speaks about tolerance and understanding and accepting of all people and loving all people. Like, I think that's kind of like, that's where I come from when it comes to my aspect of religion. I think when we talk about excluding Christians, like, I went to Liberty University, I don't know if you guys know that, very, very hardcore Christian school, and as a school counselor, rock on. Like, it was one of those things where it was, it was, it's walking that fine line of being a Christian, being very proud of being a Christian, being very aware that as a Christian educator, I bring God into the classroom every single day, and I don't have a problem with that. But I bring Him without hanging crosses on the wall, or preaching to my students, or, you know, not that I'm in that world anymore, but it's, it's different. You bring God with you everywhere you go, right? Like, I think, I mean, anybody that believes does, whether it's, it's a Christian God or, you know, any other religion, you bring it with you where you go. I don't think that we can ever take religion out of public systems because the public, the people are where that religion lies. So we can't separate that. I think that the struggle is, when we look at a calendar for a school, and we're looking at two weeks, do I think that 12-month employees should absolutely have it listed as Christmas off because it is a state holiday? Absolutely. I honestly just looked up, like, what did you say, Yorktown Victory Day? Never heard of it. It's May 8th, right? Like, is that what it's? I, Google is wrong? Okay, that makes sense, like, so, but there are so many, there's other days on there that we don't take off for school. But, I mean, it's something to kind of consider. I think that 12-month employees should get all of those, you know, the state holidays off. I do think that Christmas should be definitely listed. The big question is that when we are looking at a two-week period that does include Christmas, it does include Kwanzaa every year, it does not always include, it does not always include Hanukkah, Ramadan shifts, I think it just ended, yeah. So like, I mean, there are other holidays that are on different things, it doesn't include everything. And it would be great if we could just call it holiday break, like, I'd be down with that too. But I think that the big thing is looking at, we have, we have, we've called it winter break for, I don't know how many years. Like, I can only look up last year's calendar. If I went through all my stuff at home, I probably could have looked it up a few years ago. But how many years have we as, been calling, following the tradition of calling this winter break?
I think, I think the answer is about 20 years. I think first of all, about 1,200 years it was Christmas break, and about 20 years it's been winter break. So if you're counting numbers, it's probably-
Oh, yeah, we got, Christmas wins, but if we look at it and we're talking about needing to follow a tradition, and needing to continue to have tradition and community and togetherness and, and continuity, like, we're looking at, I mean, again, I'm just looking at the sheer number of people that cared enough to respond to a survey. I don't know how many of those people actually have students in our schools, I don't know if any of them were students. Like, I know that one way or the other, like, I know what we'll be calling it in my house, and that's going to be completely different. But I do think that if we want to be inclusive, if we want to spread that love, like, in my personal opinion, like, why not be inclusive? Why, I mean, and yes, we can still have Christmas listed on the calendar because we still have people that work 12 months out of the year, and they deserve those days off.
I think we can go on and on, I think we'll have to agree, probably, but, and I just say, I think it's, it's not so much about religion, I think in the end, it's about history and culture and tradition and state law, in my, in my mind.
And I guess I see that tradition over the last 20 years as being winter break.
Is it my turn? I don't know.
Ms. Crop, you can share, certainly. You are part of the board.
Thanks, guys. I wanted to, Ms. Davis, is that your name? No, her. Yeah, you. You talked about AI and public schools, and that is a newer thing, but it's not really anything to be too concerned about because for one, teachers can detect AI. And two, if you have a student that is turning in a five-star essay, and they're not usually a five-star essay student, and you know it's coming from AI, that's going to be easy to detect. It is scary to think that there is, like, artificial intelligence out there that could do all your work for you, but realistically, you're not going to get by with it too much very easily unless you just have a teacher who doesn't care. But with the calendar and that stuff, like I said last time, I'm a Christian too. My uncle's a pastor at Swift Ward, my aunt's the assistant pastor, but I am here on behalf of all the students in the high school, and I have so many peers and friends who do not believe the same thing that I do. And I know what it's like to be the minority in a situation, and I would hate for anyone else to feel that way. And we talked about, people mentioned, like, the majority, Christmas is the majority, but if we always listen to the majority that we followed in America, we would not be too good. For example, in the South, the majority favored slavery, if we still had slavery, that would not be too good. Also, sir, you mentioned, you know, music and Walmart and Christmas, and people are going to do what they need to do to make money, and I strongly believe that, that has nothing to do with Christianity behind it. There's a lot of people out there that might be making Christmas music that don't believe in God, just singing it, talk about whatever. Walmart, I don't think they really are religious based, they're going to do what they need to do and make money. That's why stuff, Christmas stuff's out there in October, when there's other holidays in October and November and so forth. Also, talk about cultures, back in public schools, there's so many cultures that don't get recognition, that should get recognition. For example, we celebrate Black History Month, but it's mainly the black community that celebrates Black History Month. Everyone knows February is Black History Month, but we don't go to the extreme like we do on Christmas and stuff. But, like, the majority of people saying, there's so many other holidays out there during winter break, that I don't think it's fair to limit just that one holiday that I believe in. Like, she said, my household has always been so strong with Christian faith, but what I believe is not have anything to do with anyone else. And, like she also said, if you're not, you know, strong in your faith and your Christianity, then that's on you. If you feel like the name of a school calendar is going to affect your faith in God, then that's a personal thing you have to deal with because that has nothing to do, I think, with the school. The school, public school is for the public, it's not just for one, I'm very heavy on that, I'm very heavy on separate, like, separation of church and state. I don't believe that what I believe should be broadcast on everyone 24/7. And last thing I'm going to say is that someone mentioned that this was not by personal preference, and it was, because I remember last school board meeting, I'm pretty sure you're the one that came up here or the one before that with your paper, saying that you wanted to have Christmas break instead of winter break because as a Christian, that's what you wanted. But, like I said, not everyone's a Christian. And Easter break doesn't always, spring break doesn't always fall on Easter, I know that was a thing too. So it's just so many things to think about because as a public school, there are so many different religions and backgrounds and everything, and it's just not fair to the ones who don't believe those things. Like I said, being on the end of the minority stick, it sucks, and I don't want anyone to ever feel that way. And something so small, in my opinion, stupid, as the name of the calendar, is causing so much ruckus and arguments here that I feel like it's so unnecessary, so I think it just could so simply resolve, winter break, so many things going on in the wintertime, that couple weeks. Yeah, that's about it.
Thank you for your perspective.
Thank you. Okay. Are we ready to move on? Ms. Graham, instructional report.
All right. So I have three topics to talk with you all tonight about regarding instruction. The first will be to update you on SOL testing, our testing window and dates for schools for testing. The second is just a recap of our recruiting, and then I will talk to you about the Virginia Literacy Act and where Madison County Public Schools is regarding that. So you can see the Waverly Yowell SOL testing calendar, it starts on April 30th and runs through May 10th. Third, fourth, and fifth graders will take reading and math, fourth grade also tests on Virginia Studies, and fifth grade, fifth graders take a science test as well. At Wetzel Middle School, their testing begins on May 1st and concludes on May 9th. All grades take reading and math, and eighth graders also complete a science and a civics SOL test. At the high school, we didn't list this out by each individual course, but all of the sciences, math, reading, and history are testing from May 7th through May 9th, and that covers all of the variety of courses and the sciences and histories that are covered. Any questions on the testing calendar, anything related to that before I go into the next topic? All right. So we have been recruiting steadily throughout the school year, and this was the first year that we, well, I say it's the first year, we did hold an in-house job fair last year, but this year we did two, a fall and a spring, and they were very successful, and we were very well pleased with the results. We had a- And we were very well pleased with the results. We had a lot of local folks come in and talk to us about a variety of positions and so we're happy, happy about that and we'll continue to hold those in future years. We also attended a variety of education fairs across Virginia and two in Pennsylvania. We have hired teachers as a result of these fairs, some that we went to more successful than others. I think as a general rule, the fairs were more well-attended this year. It was a better recruiting year at the various colleges that we went to. Some we've gone to in the past and we're not able to this year. Some schools didn't have them this year that have had them in the past. Some filled up before we signed up. So, there are a variety of reasons why those change from year to year. This just happens to be the list that we were able to complete in this school year. All right. And then I'm gonna move into the Virginia Literacy Act, so I'm jumping around a little bit. As you know, the Virginia General Assembly has passed the Virginia Literacy Act. This is state law. And so, the requirements of this law that focuses on kindergarten through eighth grade are that we select and implement a core curriculum in the science of reading, that we provide training on high-quality instructional materials to be used, that we use screening, supplemental instruction, and intervention that is high-quality and off of the vetted list from the Department of Education, and that we are engaging parents and their children's literacy plans. And so, I'm gonna go through each one of those individually. So, first of all, the core reading and literacy curriculum, as you all know, most of you were a part of this. The VDOE has provided a vetted list of approved curriculum. However, we adopted in May of 2022 for kindergarten through fifth grade, McGraw-Hill's Open Court and it is on our approved list. For sixth through 12th grade, we adopted HMH's Into Literature, which is also on the approved list. And those texts were implemented starting the 2223 school year. Now, part of the act is that we train our teachers and so all staff were trained at the beginning of the adoption. Once we had those textbooks in hand, the companies came in, they trained all of the teachers and we have ongoing modules that teachers can access. We are still working with the companies. Our teachers meet with them as, as we've gone through these first two years. We do train new teachers as they come in as well. We, we don't just throw the books at them and say, "Good luck." We, we pull in and we, we give them the training as well. And they have access at any time to a, just a huge amount of support materials from the companies, McGraw-Hill and HMH, that they can access at any time. And so, starting this summer, the VDOE is offering online modules because there is also a requirement that teachers are trained in the science of reading. So, you can see that part of, part of our work started even before the textbook adoption. We had teachers going through what's called the Letters Course, which trains them in the science of reading. We've had 37 teachers complete Letters Part One. Orton Gillingham, we anticipate will be on an approved list of required training for teachers and we've had 13 teachers who have completed that course. And again, this summer, the Department of Ed is offering online modules that also count toward the requirement. And so, we will work with our teachers in getting that accomplished that all teachers K through eight are able to complete the requirement of the Literacy Act. All right. And we are required to use approved screeners and intervention programs and quite honestly, we were already using almost all of these prior to the Literacy Act. But for screening, which just means, you know, we're, we're getting a baseline of where students are and what their needs are. We use vowels in kindergarten through third grade. That is formerly pals. The name has been updated. Open Court has assessments. Dibbles is another assessment. We've been using the Into Literature. We have been using their benchmark assessments in six through eight. We have the SOL Growth Assessment as well to guide our, to guide our teaching. And that's what those screeners do. They give us information so we can figure out where students are and kind of meet them where they are and remediate and move them forward. And then for intervention, once we know where students are, we're using a program called Lexia for kindergarten through fifth grade. We've just recently signed on with Varsity Tutors and you'll be hearing more about that. It's a program that students, it's student and parent-driven. Students will have logins and passwords. They can go on and get tutoring in any subject 24/7, all year round. And they also provide essay checks. So, if a student's working on a writing, a written piece, they can upload it. Varsity Tutors will give them support on writing their essay, give them feedback. In middle school, we use a program called Reading Plus to support our struggling readers. In kindergarten through second grade, we have Hegarty and Recipe for Reading, which is a word study support. And then sixth through 12th grade, even though technically nine through 12 is not part of this act, we are using Read 180, which supports our Tier Three readers. So, those are the things we have in place. And then engaging parents and caregivers. I came up with a shortlist. Certainly, there are other things that I probably have not remembered, but we hold literacy nights, library nights, Title I nights. I'm sure, you know, at the, at Waverly and the primary school, there are monthly events. We hold an annual picnic for our English language learners and that's very popular and we have a great turnout for that. School-level meetings are held with parents of at-risk students and those parents do become partners in creating literacy plans for their child. We have, of course, formal parent conferences held two times a year. We offer committees that parents can be a part of, our Special Education Advisory Committee, Gifted Committee, Diversity, Opportunity, and Inclusion Task Force. And we send score reports home. So, you know, parents are receiving report cards, SOL Growth Assessment, vowels, reports, any kind of local, local assessments. Parents are shared that information. And so, as part of all of this, our leadership team is working together. We have a Division Literacy Plan that is due to the Department of Education on July 1st. And so, we are working together to pull all of this information with great detail, greater than I've shared with you tonight because it's not quite ready. We're pulling it together. But it will be ready. It will be sent to the Department of Ed. It will be made public. Our plan will be out there for anyone and everyone to see once it has been approved by them. And this is the work we are, we are challenged with and hopefully making great strides because what this means is our children will be reading and reading well and literacy is gonna be the key for their lives to be successful. Yeah.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I have just had a couple of questions. On the recruiting side, and for the public, we were given five, I think it was five, really good, really good new teachers to approve. And so, fantastic news and good work on finding them. Where do you think we are kind of in comparison to the years past in terms of recruiting and filling the spots?
So, right now, we are in very good shape. I think, I have, have the list. I'll just pull that out. Oh, let me pull that out. That was pretty fun. So, at the high school right now, we're looking for an agriculture teacher. We still have a library media specialist opening. We are searching for teachers, a teacher and an IA for alternative education. At Waverly, we're looking for elementary teachers. We still have a few openings. At Wetzel, we need a full-time custodian and a PE teacher. So, honestly, we're okay. I mean, we, we've got some, some openings to fill, but we feel confident that we will fill these. It's not a, it's not a huge list. It's a shortlist.
And the second question on the literacy, there's a thing, I know a lot of work has gone into it. Mrs. Graham, or Dr. Jones, how do you, how do you feel? How do you feel about kind of the scores coming up and asking to project? But do you feel comfortable with what we've done and getting back to where we wanted to be?
I do. We have, we have followed all the guidelines that have come down from the state this year. You know, All-in-Virginia came out and we did what we needed to do to revamp and really get kids working in the right direction, pulled out time and schedules so that they are dedicated, you know, dedicated time to their areas of weakness. I think, we anticipate that we'll see improvement, slow and steady.
And last thing, I just wanted-
You know, we, we, second year, I think, when you adopt, this is our second year with the adoption, there's always a bit of a dip when you're first, you know, in a new curriculum. This is second year, so hopefully that's also gonna be on the rise.
I just want to commend the, having things like the volunteer and recruiting thing that last, a couple of weeks ago, I think it was, recruiting fair for the volunteers and I just-
The job fair, a local job-
Commend, you know, doing that here locally is fantastic. So, thank you for putting that together.
And we've had good success from that, right?
Yeah.
That was a great idea. Any other questions or comments for Ms. Jones? Okey-dokey. Virtual high school learning. Ms. Graham?
Yes, thank you. I'll give Mr. Pate a second to pull up the presentation.
Yeah, it was moving slow for me, too.
Yeah, I'm using my paper right now because I can't get mine to come up. It's okay.
Mine is still loading.
I think it's a little difficult in the gym. Okay, you can go ahead and go to the next slide and I'll explain what we're talking about. So, Ms. Winham and, okay, you can come on up. And Jillian Smith, the three of us got together and started talking about an untapped resource, really, at the high school. We purchase Apex Learning, which is online learning courses for students and we also, well, more so that than the other, but we also have Virtual Virginia. They're a little more selective, a little more difficult to get into. But we decided they're being used. Kids can always, at the high school, take an online learning class when they need to, either Virtual Virginia or Apex. A lot of that would be that third option there. It's on campus. Kids use it to just kind of fill a course that they need or maybe even a period they need. If their schedule's not working out, they need to go take it online. But it is an untapped resource for us because things have come up throughout the year and years past where a student, like sometimes our homebound students, they need to take online courses or a student just, situation comes up, maybe, Nita, maybe they're a student that's doing a lot of 4H and they need to take an online course in the afternoons because they're leaving a lot on a Friday afternoon. Who knows? But there's been a lot of situations that come up that we all got together and was like, you know what? This is really an option for any student if it's something that their family is interested in looking into. So, Ms. Winham, in her way to put together an awesome slide to explain everything on one sheet, explains it out here. We have our diploma-track students, so they are the students that are enrolled full-time at the high school and they might engage in online learning either off-campus. Maybe all their classes are off-campus, but they're taking a full load and they are eligible to participate in Virginia High School League activities. Sometimes, however, there might be a course that's not offered online, so they might have to come on and take that class here on campus. But generally, they can be an off-campus student and be a full-time Madison County High School student. We have the students, like I described before, who come to school every day, but maybe one or two of their classes are online. Maybe for whatever reason, all their classes are online and they're just learning in our online learning room. Or it could be the hybrid student that has classes here or there. So, that's an option that's open to all of our students and it's not really out there so much. So, we just wanted to make sure that people are aware of that. The other thing that is open and always has been open, it's not something now, but homeschool students have always been able to participate on campus at a public high school. And so, this is another way we thought we could engage students in our community that might want to be part of the high school, that maybe still want to stay home. Maybe they want to take a couple of classes through the high school, but do that in, at their home with their parents. And so, they're still gonna be able to, you know, say, "Hey, I'm connected to the high school. I'm just at home." And they are, they would be like a part-time student, though. Once you enroll, you would be part-time public school student for whatever it is, like one course, two course, but the maximum you can take is two courses at a time per semester. They're welcome always to come on campus and take up to two classes per semester. And then also, you could take one class on campus, one class off-campus. But we just wanted to kind of review this tonight and make sure that people are aware that that is an option. The light's gonna go off. For our students and we're hoping-
Ms. Alexander, will you go walk around? The lights are going off.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Alexander. It's also by pointing this out, it's an option, too, of maybe we have some homeschool students that didn't realize this was possible that would like to join us in the evenings for sports. You're allowed, if they would like to enroll full-time with the high school, take online classes at home with their parents and then come and join us for extracurricular activities. It's, it's options that have always been around, was just not very publicized. And so, we want to make sure that we engage everyone. If you go to the next slide, that's just the two platforms I described, the Virtual Virginia and the Apex. Online, folks can go in and click on these on the presentation. It's also on the website on the high school, the first page, right? Ms. Winham? And so, go to the next slide. This is information that the high school will send out to parents, but it's not just something you sign up for. We are, we've talked about this a lot. If it's something that's interesting to families and they want to explore this further, we are asking that in order to do this, the student and the parent needs to come in, meet with a counselor, discuss what would this look like for you, either the exploratory track where you just want to get a taste of what we have to offer or you're a full-time student and you just want to plan out what it could look like to be a virtual student. And there are contracts involved that say, hey, if I'm gonna start not passing these classes, you're not gonna be allowed to do it. That's part of the contract. But we wanted just folks to know about this opportunity. Go ahead.
Well, I think this is exciting, but also it's, we already are doing it in many ways. So, like I said, like, for instance, I had a kid this year who had a full-time job opportunity at a power company and he only had like a few classes, so we worked with him. What I would also say is if you go back a slide to, even if you're a homeschool student and say you want to come in and take, maybe you get a certification, like a CTE certification, like, there's different things that you can do. Or perhaps you want to be full-time, you know, like she sort of hit on agriculture. You want to be full-time. You're gonna take mainly your core courses at home, online, but you want to come in and take some of the either CTE programs. There, it's really diverse and it's not just... I, I believe in public education, clearly because I'm a public school administrator, but I believe in it when you have good people working together to provide positive experiences for kids. And I do believe we offer that at Madison County High School. And so, in saying that, it's not just sports, like extracurriculars, FFA, our nursing. They can get their patient care technician. They can get their CNA program. There's tons of things that are offered to citizens of Virginia at no cost, of free education. And we have a lot of that here where parents can also supplement their kids at home. So, for instance, if the Apex courses with English, whatever, you know, that's your curriculum there. And then if a parent wants to supplement their own spiritual values, their Christianity, all of that, they can supplement at home with their child while doing that. But they want to come in, take art, take studio art, be able to do clay, as long as they're enrolled in three classes, enrolled full-time, and making progress in those classes, they're eligible to participate in forensics and sports and that full experience. And I think that just goes like the song earlier when they're singing, like, it takes all of us together. Like, yes, this is public education. Yes, we have a hodgepodge of viewpoints, but I'm gonna love every single one of them that comes in here and they're gonna see my positive energy and my teachers. And so, and we'll work with parents to provide that opportunity for them. I will say, if you go to the next slide, the one thing that is different, but it's all on the website now, the next one, I'm sorry, there is a button that you can click and on our website, you guys can view the application. So, the application is already there where you can click, you fill that out. Within a week, you'll hear from myself or a school counselor to set up a planning meeting with the family. So, even if it's a family that is like, you know, I'm not really sure, fill it out and then just come in and like, we, we can talk and explain options. You would have to come in at some times, like maybe to take an SOL test, but we would have a testing center if you were getting the, like a high school diploma. But we just wanted to make sure that everyone, it was fair and accessible to everybody because we do work individually with students with academic career plans. And a student who says they're gonna do it all at home, they are still assigned a staff member here, a virtual learning coordinator who stays on top because they have to still attend and go to school. So, you could have a kid in virtual learning, but maybe they're not logging in, so they could still be truant, right? So, you, we still have enough data to justify whether a kid's attending or not and we have a way to monitor that with a virtual learning coordinator. So, thank you, guys. Sorry, I just, I wasn't gonna say anything, but then I got...
I have a question. So, if, you know, a family doesn't listen to us at a school board meeting and they aren't connected to another family and this, how are they gonna find out about this? Like, are we, we don't have a way to call home necessarily. Like, how, how would they know other than digging into the?
Probably similar to like the county fair. We'll put it out on Facebook.
Probably similar to like the county fair. We'll put it out on Facebook. We'll put it through social media, word of mouth, talking to people, students.
We can also mail it out to our homeschool families.
Okay.
We have on our to-do list a letter to like, like homeschool families and that kind of thing, just to make people aware of the options. And again, it doesn't have to be full-time enrollment, but we have a lot of great things here and, you know, it brings us together.
Yeah, I'm proud of that and I want to get it, you know, get it out there.
I think part of it, just us, I mean, I think we can help, you know, I think all the school board have connections and stuff. And so, I mean, just for example, I mean, I'm so proud of you all for doing this. And my, I have two nephews, two different families who are planning to come next year kind of because of this. They want to come do the hybrid kind of model thing, where they do some stuff at home and do this and.
But a lot of kids do that now. That's what I want people to know. I feel bad that maybe we haven't put it out there as much, but we do work in it. Like, I don't want it to look like.
I'm proud that, I'm proud that we're really, you know, we're really trying to spread the word. I think we can, we can all play a role in that in our little communities that we are in to say, hey, there are a lot of opportunities, you know? And there are a lot of great people here in Madison and a lot of good work being done. And so, there's some, some wonderful things you can do here. And so, I just want, I want to say about like Ms. Smith and Ms. Winham, I mean, super, anybody thinking about doing this, super easy to work with, super flexible for families. It's a fantastic resource for families who want to go that route. And so, I just commend you all for, for doing that for sure.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments?
I was just going to say, I take two Virtual Virginia classes while taking, I originally had three, but I dropped one because I do work and then soccer. And then most time I go back to work and I'll be here. So, I take two year-long Virtual Virginia classes while now having two in-person classes and it helps. Like, if I would have known about this last year when I was working and playing soccer and all that stuff, it would have saved me so much stress, so much time. Like, last year, my junior year, I think there was more nights than I, I was up past midnight, 1:00 in the morning, getting stuff done for all my DE classes. But I've been telling all my friends in DE classes this year, I'm like, y'all should take AP.
Well, there's, if you look at the Virtual Virginia and even not Apex, there's, there's a huge variety of courses. But there's AP, like AP, tons of AP level courses, a lot of good preparation courses. But it's just, I don't know, it's, for me, it's neat because one thing that I take a lot of pride in is our CTE program with the high-quality work-based learning that we've implemented in every course. So, like your, a kid's schedule can be so awesome. Like, they can get credit for leaving to go to work. They can do farm, the farm management class, they can get credit for that, working on a farm and come in and take their English class. Or if they want to take their English class online, like there's so many options. And if it's all out there, like, and we're already offering it, why not take advantage of it and meet kids and families where they are? But we also want them to be part of our community here because that's going to make us better. Like, the more kids in Madison that are here that are attending our schools, it's going to make us better.
I have two questions. One of this kind of with the deadline. Like, I know my son is also one that takes one of his classes online, but it was because the teacher left and he couldn't get in that class. And so, he's taken astronomy. So, with kids like that, like, I'm just kind of wondering in general, like, if, I mean, I know we have a deadline for people that want to do it. Will there still be space and those options open for like this last minute kind of thing?
This is more so, this is more so for someone who wants to change their full enrollment sort of that. We already, at this point, when we did course registration, they've already signed up for online classes. Because that's part of the, they can sign up for that and their academic career plans, their counselors have that. So, this would be a kid, more so for a kid that's like, you know what, Ms. Winham, I really would like to go full virtual last year, next year. My job's offering me more hours and that kind of thing. But you only, you can't change mid-semester. So, it has to be like May 24th, the last day of the school year. You need to let us know if you're looking at virtual for next semester. By December 1st, if you're, if you want to look and change your schedule for second semester. So, you can't like in the middle of the semester be like, oh, I don't want to do this. So, we're trying to keep it really consistent and that's what we do anyways. So, you're fine. And that's how, we're building sections now for our master schedule.
And then the other question, like with, with Jen and our AP classes and things like that, will the testing be here and something we offer? Is that something that we need to?
We offer, we currently offer it. So, mo, most of our AP classes actually are online except for AP Government. So, and AP Bio, but we have a plethora of AP classes, but we offer them all here regardless of whatever method they take. So, we use the fire hall, we use school board office, we do that at the same time.
And that might be something, like when you're thinking of your letter, like, because I know one of my concerns for a while has been like, there were, I think when I started in Madison, which was like before you even, there were like five DE classes and one AP class. And that was the, the extent of it. And I know how hard you've worked to kind of grow that. And so, just being able to advertise that, I think, you know, might be something to include in that.
Yeah, and that, if you go back to the website, like our course of studies is for anyone that's, like our course of studies is there. Our team here at this high school's done a really great job of putting together a nice course of studies where you can really see the rigor that we offer. So, yeah.
And I just want to clarify, it's for all high school students, not just upperclassmen.
Yeah. So, and if there's an, say, there's an eighth grader, say, you know, or someone that's trans, we get a lot of transfers from like Culpeper Christian School that, you know, will come in and begin their ninth grade year. And sometimes that's a hard transition. Some of them want to, it's their first time in public school, maybe they want to take one or two classes online. So, it's just, we work with kids' schedules like that all the time. So, that's just something that a parent who is actively involved in their child's education, clearly, I feel like that's where we've done a good job because they're here, they're asking. But we're, we want to do a better job of letting everybody know, you know, not just the ones that come and us working with them individually. So, we have flexibility.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Graham Dewey. Can we put that on the main, like the front page of the website so that it's an easy one-click and gets us there to it? And then we can, as we talk to people, they can, we can just say, just go to the main page and there's a link there.
Okie doke. Moving right along. Our next agenda item is business information. This is just information for you guys to ponder and read over the next month. You have, there's a ton of policies in there that the SBA has given us to review and make sure we are in agreement with. Most of them are like legal references and just policy wording, right?
Correct, most of them. I pulled a couple that you might want to write down the numbers of and I'm sorry.
Okay.
Don't ask me about the others because I can't get them. But I happened to pull a couple. BCF, that lists out your advisory committee. So, I thought that might be of interest to you. And it took out these committees serve without compensation. That was the only line. But that has your committees listed. EBCD, EBCD, school closings. They added a line that when any or all schools are ordered to be closed for in-person instruction, the superintendent or superintendent's designee may declare an unscheduled remote learning day, consistent with laws and policies. We have said here that that would be difficult for students in Madison because we're still, until our internet access is more widespread. So, I want, like, that'll be in the policy, but I just wanted you to know it tends to, probably won't happen around here. And then it says superintendent may establish any regulations necessary regarding employee work schedules during school closings. And we actually already do have that. And Ms. Patterson sends that out to employees each year, the codes for closing, so. IKB, I thought that might be of interest to you because they, VSB A deleted this policy because it's not legally required to have it.
Which one is it?
Homework. It's the homework policy. So, I wanted to kind of bring that to your attention. If you, I mean, technically, you could keep it if you want to read the stance. That's in our current policy for homework. It might be something you choose to keep. But I didn't want that to be passed by you because it's one they're deleting. They have in their KLB, Public Complaints About Learning Resources. I pulled that up. The only sentence that's added, and I wanted to bring it to your attention because of the work done with the sexually explicit materials. They added the line, it's the responsibility of the school board, so Madison County School Board, to establish procedures for handling challenged, controversial materials. That was the line added. And then it follows the policy that you have in there. So, I want to bring that to your attention. Um, yeah, KLB. And then JFCJ, JFCJ, it's hard to hear here. That's one that we hadn't had before in Madison, but recommending that we put in because we do have students that attend alternative education programs. And it's just saying if they were to get in trouble there, let's say they get suspended because they brought a knife to school or something, this policy is saying, we'd like to know about it. And yeah, we'd like to know about it because they, you know, eventually come back to us. So, those were just the ones that I thought might be of extra interest to you. But still, look at the rest.
Does that include also any students that are like transferring from other counties or divisions that may have been involved with that?
It speaks specifically to alternative schools. But if they're coming from another division, you have to disclose that when you're coming as us. We have asked a question on if you've been, if you're currently suspended or been in trouble, so.
All right. So, you guys, we have some light reading. This, this month. There's quite a few there. Thank you, Ms. Graham, for pulling out those. Our next agenda item is the proposed revisions to policy IC slash ID, school year and school day policy. This is again, is the first read. And we will read this and think about it over the month and probably vote next month. If you do have any, you can say whatever you want to say, but if you do have any additions or subtractions or questions or whatever, Mr. Wingate's taking the lead on this one.
Yes, I mean, I, please, everybody has it, please, please let me know thoughts. I don't, I think we've kind of beat this topic to death probably, but just three, you know, three things that are in the policy that are revisions in order to help the committee, you know, not go back and forth again and again every year and have this debate every year, just three, three things. It just says all 12 Virginia legal holidays will be on the school calendar. In some years past, they haven't had Juneteenth, Columbus Day and Veterans Day on there, missed on the calendar. And I think, I think all 12 calendars should, all 12 holidays should be on the calendar. So, the policy calls for that. I'm not saying they all have to be days off. If they're not days off, a day or days off, I think it's just we should mark them in some respectful, positive manner to recognize why we have those days, Veterans Day. And we do that, and schools have done a great job in terms of Veterans Day, things like that. So, so the policy calls for all 12 Virginia legal holidays to be on the calendar, either off or marked in a positive manner. Number two of three points, days or breaks off on the calendar shall be named in honor of the holiday being observed in accordance with state law. So, not a personal preference, but on state law, those 12 ones I read earlier. When two holidays are on a period, it could be, it would be Christmas and New Year's break because two holidays are over that period, Thanksgiving break and so forth. So, every holiday name would be in accordance with state law. And last thing, last point is other days on the calendar, when we decide, we, in the committee and we decide that there should be days off that are not on legal holidays, they'll be named generically. So, spring break, April holiday, if it was Good Fridays, it says, I think Good Friday is off is a good, a good idea if it serves the community. But it would, it would be a generic, generic name because it's not a, you know, state law tied to it. So, those are the three things that are, you can see on the, on the policy draft that we really, that I'm advocating for. And I'd like to seek a vote next month so that we can make sure the committee members have, have something firm to go off of. Any, any questions or thoughts? And certainly, you can read it and give me, give me your thoughts one individually or now and entertain any questions for sure.
If you do email thoughts, just email single, please. Don't email our group. We don't conduct business without having a public meeting.
Just a quick question. If we're, I'm down for like listing all the holidays, but I also know, I don't have like the format that you guys work with, with our actual, like the calendar for the schools. Like, I think when we publish the online event, like it should definitely be there. Is there room? Like, because those boxes in between the months are not very big. Like, that's some tight space. And I want to make sure, I mean, these are things that should be honored. Like, is there physically room to add all the holiday? Does that make sense? Like, I don't know if we can add in another box and like another color code? Just something to think about.
I would defer, I would defer to the committee, I don't know.
Yeah. Okay. I just, I mean, because I know it's, it's, it's a lot of information in a teeny tiny space as it is. And so, that's just my concern. But I do know like the online calendar of the school that has all the meetings and things like that, like that one, I definitely like.
Okay. Any other comments on that? All right. Be prepared to vote next month. Okay, we have a couple of things to approve tonight. So, we'll need to do our formal voting as soon as my computer loads. So, I can read it to you. Sorry. All right, there we go. The next agenda item is to approve the annual special education plan for 2024, 2025 year, school year as presented. We heard about this before. Ms. Graham, do you have anything to add? I have no concerns. Yeah, we went over this already. So, all right. Yes, we did this in the Special Ed Advisory Committee meeting. So, Mr. Sheed and I heard it twice.
I did. I enjoyed that meeting. I think, thank you for letting me be there.
Thank you for your work on this, Jeanette. All right. I will open the floor to, for motions to approve the special education plan.
I'll make a motion to approve the special education plan for the 2024, 2025 school year as presented.
We have a motion. We need a second.
I have a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. You have a special education plan. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next agenda item is the, you know what, I'm going to get my paper out because my computer is not wanting to work. All right. The next agenda item is the Perkins Grant. We also saw this last month. This is the CTE funding from the federal government. Anybody have any questions?
I wonder, you know, Perkins, the Perkins Grant, the name comes from the man that designed the diesel engine, Perkins Diesel Engine, right? So, at what point can we get in touch with Elon Musk and see if there's a Tesla grant of some sort that we could gain? I think he has plenty. If he can afford Twitter X for 44 billion, he might be able to drop us a couple hundred.
Who Elon is? Oh, great.
SpaceX program's doing fantastic.
All right. Any questions about the Perkins Grant? I did not know that. You educated me. All right. I will open the floor to approve the Perkins Grant as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the Perkins Plan for Career and Technical Education for Madison County Public Schools for the 2023, 2024 school year.
We have a motion. We need a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. We have a Perkins Grant. Okay. This has been the hot, hot topic of the night. So, the 2024, 2025 school calendar, we saw that last month. We've listened for a month and heard. Do you have anything to add, Ms. Graham?
I was going to recommend, last month, the calendar had spring break, the 31st of March through April 4th. But then, as it was described, we thought we were keeping with some surrounding counties. So, we, we found out that wasn't their break. So, we moved it 7 through 11. But I do recommend that it goes back to the 31st through the 4th. Some, you know, teachers were, I suppose they were teachers, maybe parents, were mentioning in the survey, the need to want like some sort of day or time in March. So, at least moving break back to that March 31st through April 4th would give a little bit more of a break in between that stretch from February to April. So, that's one of my recommendations from the calendar you see here.
I guess for, you still, so in my opinion, and to make it, and I would hope it passes in the. in the policy revision, it's missing Juneteenth, which is a federal, which is a state holiday, Columbus Day, which is a state holiday, and Veterans Day. I think it's a missed opportunity to sort of teach children.
Juneteenth is actually added in the summer. It's just not right here on the calendar, but it is part of our calendar. When we put out the summer school calendar, it's, Juneteenth is one of the days off, like it is this year as well.
I just think, I just think it's a missed, missed opportunity to, to have it on there. And so I guess I'd propose if, either push this, push this off a month to approve it, unless we need to approve it tonight, or make those changes now if we can, so that those, those three dates. And I don't mean observe them, I mean, I'm not saying observe them, the days off, but I'm saying at least do some kind of observation of each one of those. Juneteenth, Columbus Day, and Veterans Day means something important to our community, they're state law, to be observed. So I think it makes sense to put them on there. So I don't know, I don't, Ms. Graham, if it's better to wait a month, or we can make those changes if everybody agrees with them now. I don't know.
Even when, if you guys make changes now, we'll publish the calendar with the changes made.
As long as we word the motion the right way.
Right.
Then we can vote on it tonight.
We keep a running list of the changes, yes. I'll keep a running list of the changes and then hand it to whoever wants to make a motion.
Okay. I said, as long as we, I mean, we're not changing anything drastically, I don't think, except for spring break. Like we're moving that back. March the 31st, spring break will start and end on April the 4th. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Stop me if I'm doing anything wrong.
Yeah.
And we are going to add the state holidays.
There's three, I think, I think there are three missing. I don't want to check, but I think it's Juneteenth, Columbus Day, and Veterans Day, I believe.
Okay. Are you, are you writing them down, Mr. DeBoer?
Yes.
And then.
Are we observing those or just recognizing them?
I mean, I was just saying, recognize them, but I mean, I'm, I'm open to.
Juneteenth, we already started recognizing, you voted on that at a school board meeting, was it last year, last May, maybe, or some point?
Summer school was closed.
So we do observe June 19th.
Yes, summer school was closed that day.
This calendar, it would just be recognizing them, and then the summer school calendar is separate, right?
Correct. We can say.
For June 19th, yes. So what about Columbus Day and Veterans Day?
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with, I think it's an opportunity to recognize them. The schools did a fantastic job with Veterans Day last year. I'm fine. I think it's nice to have schools in session and talk about, hey, why are these important to our country? So unless there needs to be a break, I think it's great to have it in session.
It's really meaningful to the veterans, I think, too. I mean, they're invited in.
You all did a fantastic job. You really did.
I think it's just recognized, not off.
Good.
And then we got lots of feedback to have, I don't know what we want to call it, to have Good Friday off. Do we want to keep that in there?
What?
Is that April 18th?
April 18th, yes.
To have that Friday off.
I mean, I think, I think people, I think a lot of, a lot of people like the idea of having that day off, and it's reflective of our community. I certainly think we should keep the, keep the day off. I mean, in the policy, I say, we don't, it's not state law, we don't call it Good Friday, but it's still a day off. I'm, I'm open, the board, I'm not the board, the board should decide whether you call it Good Friday or not. The policy, I say, we adhere to state law only, and so it'd be April break or April holiday, but I, I don't know.
I would want to make sure that 12-month employees have that off as well if we're going to take it off. Everybody has it off.
Well, do 12-month employees get all the red days off?
No.
Oh, that's right, because that's Christmas break. And I was, I was looking at the top half of the calendar where it just had the holidays on.
I'm not so critical on having the day off, other than making sure it's an excused absence for students. If their parents decide to pull them out of school that day for observance of that day, I'm not, not overly critical of needing it to be a, a holiday off, but I would like to see it on the calendar, and parents know that if they want to observe with their children that they, it's excused absence.
And maybe we need to make parents aware that it's, if you have a religious holiday, it's an excused absence for your child.
How about teachers? What's your sense of the teachers and kind of wanting that, I mean, having that day off?
I think a day off would be appreciated as a day off. I feel like more people in this survey were pushing for a day off in March.
In March.
Eighteen people specifically said they wanted a work day in March. Twelve said no to having Good Friday off. Sixteen said yes to having Good Friday off. But I mean, I don't know if their parents, students.
So you could give them a day off in March and give them an excused absence, Mr. Sheed's talking about for that day.
Did you say, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I was just saying, I was echoing Mr. Sheed's and saying, make that an excused absence day, and then give the teachers a day off in March, is what they were kind of looking for, sounds like. I think they were, teachers were saying this a long, long time in March where they didn't have a break, I think. Is that right, Mrs. Graham?
I know that was my concern the last time, when we first looked at it, was March is a long month.
But if we take.
The end of the marking period is March 14th. So if you were gonna do a day off, it needs to be around either the 14th or like the 17th, a day when teachers are like finishing up grading or something like that, if that's the purpose of it, you know.
Right before report cards are due.
Right. So when a report, when do report cards go out?
Reports cards go out on March 19th.
On March what?
19th. Quarter ends on the 14th. The report cards go out on the 19th. So probably the 17th.
The 17th would probably be the best, right?
Yeah. I would say.
Should be a work day or? A work day, because that would be a work, get ready for.
Teacher work day, March 17th.
Correct.
Teacher work day.
That's what I'm hearing. It's the will of the board.
And that's in place of April 18th.
And that would replace April 18th.
Okay.
Replace April 18th.
Would that have to shift the start of the quarter then to the 18th of March?
I'm sorry?
I said, would that have to shift the, the start of the last quarter for you guys till the 18th of March?
It will.
Would just change the date, yeah.
Yeah, we'll just change the date on there.
Change the start of the quarter date to the 18th. That would still put us at 177 days total.
So we're still okay, in about the same.
177 with Good Friday. So we add it in Good Friday back and take this one off, we're still at 177.
Okay. Okay. I got it cool.
I'm good.
Good? Good? Are we okay?
I'm good.
All right. I just get to call for the motion. I don't have to remember all that.
My only concern is the whole Christmas winter break thing, but I don't know that that's going to go away. Like, I think as, the work that you guys did on this calendar for the record has been really amazing, and I know how hard it is to try to make everybody happy. And I know you kicked butt at that, Jessie, so good job.
You ready to make the motion?
I'll make a motion.
Sorry. Open the floor for the motion to approve the 2024, 2025 calendar. With?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2024, 2025 cal, school calendar as presented with the changes we made in the last five minutes.
Okay.
Does that suffice?
Yes. And you have all those written down?
Yes.
All right. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the 2025, 2025, 2024, 2025 MCHS, MCPS calendar with the changes. We need a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I want to share some stuff that, some research that I've, I've done, to look up some factual information, not feelings or thoughts or opinions. So first of all, Mrs. DeBoer, you don't have to stand if you want to sit down, that's okay. All right. Thank you. I apologize, because this is a lot of trouble for you, but every single time we contact you, you're like, yep, no problem, we can do that. And I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. I wanted to mention about the workday thing, that seemed to be really important, so I'm glad that we're working through that. That's great. When this survey initially came out, I don't know who it was all sent to. So I just, out of interest, there was a Facebook page online called Folks Who Love Madison County, Virginia. So I thought, well, I'm going to put this little quick poll up, and it's regarding Madison County School Board's proposal to change winter break to Christmas, add Good Friday. They had those, change it to Christmas, change, add Good Friday, or neither. And overwhelming majority of the people that answered on there that voted were for changing it to Christmas, were for adding Good Friday. I did find out, however, that there's a considerable number of people that do not like me, and I'm okay with that. All right. The, so I wanted to find out, you know, I keep hearing this, this gong that keeps blowing off about how America's not a Christian nation, America's not a Christian nation. Well, if you go back and actually read what our founding fathers wrote, and what they, what they kept in their memoirs, you would absolutely, you would not be able to say that this was not a Christian nation upon its founding. So in 1636, America's first college, Harvard, was established, and its rules declared this. Let every student be plainly instructed and earnestly pressed to consider well the main end of his life and studies is to know God and Jesus Christ, which is eternal life, and therefore to lay Christ in the bottom as the only foundation of all sound knowledge and learning. And seeing the Lord only giveth wisdom, let everyone seriously set himself by prayer and secret to seek it out of him. Everyone shall so exercise himself in reading the scriptures twice a day that he shall be ready to give such an account of his proficiency therein. That was Harvard, 1636. In 1642, America's first public education law was passed. It was called the Old Deluder Satan Law. Deluder also means deceiver, the old deceiver Satan Law, which explained, quote, "It being one chief project of that old deluder Satan to keep men from the knowledge of the scriptures." In 1690, America's first public school textbook was published, the New England Primer. I have copies of it at my house. It was reprinted for 250 years. It was a common text from which American students learned to read, contained rhyming words derived from the Bible stories. Students were taught to read using this book to ensure that they would be able to read the Bible. Interestingly enough, in 1844, the Supreme Court took on a case in which a $7 million estate was to be used to construct a college for orphans ages six to 18 years old. However, it had a stipulation, and it's read this. "I enjoin and require that no ecclesiastic missionary or minister of any sect," meaning denomination, "whatsoever shall hold or exercise any station or duty whatsoever in the said college, nor shall any such person ever be admitted for any purpose or as a visitor when the, within the premises." Well, Daniel Webster took on this case. Daniel Webster was also known as the defender of the Constitution. He represented the family heirs because they wanted to have a, have Christian teaching in this college. His argument lasted for three days, in which he repeatedly attacked the anti-Christian posture of the school. The court pointed out that even though the will had prohibited clergy, it had not explicitly prohibited Christian instruction. It was therefore constitutionally acceptable. John Jay, President of the Continental Congress and author of the Federalist Papers, says, "The Bible is the best of all books, for it is the word of God and teaches us the way to be happy in this world and in the next. Continue therefore to read it and to regulate your life by its precepts." So I also heard about Thanksgiving, and that's been around longer than Christmas for the United States or the colonies. And I heard somebody say that Thanksgiving's not a religious holiday. Well, then I might ask, who are we giving thanks to? Who were the pilgrims giving thanks to? Well, they were thanking God for him bringing them through this hard time and giving them bountiful harvest. So thinking about that, do we not celebrate Thanksgiving? Because some people thank God for him taking care of them. Do we not celebrate Veterans Day because Muslims may be offended? Do we not celebrate Mother Day, Mother's Day and Father's Day because some children may not have a mom or a dad? We got to get beyond the being offended. Now, we can take another step forward and look at this, say, okay, what if we don't change it to Christmas? Well, one of the biggest complaints that we get just about every meeting we have here is scores of the children, which I might add, the scores are what they are due to the fact that the schools were shut down back during COVID, which was before this board's tenure. Do we need a Christmas break? Do we need the children in school that amount of time to catch back up? Do we need to keep them in school year round? At what point do we say, let's do that? We're not trying to, I'm not trying to say that we need to have a Bible class here, although I believe it would help everyone if they were sitting in a Bible class. What we are doing is considering a cultural, traditional holiday that has been around for a long time in this country. And I don't see what is so offensive about that. I do want to thank each one of y'all that spoke, and I wish the other ladies that were here would have stuck around and, and listened as well, but I appreciate y'all. Thank y'all very much. And Mrs. DeBoer, again, thank you for, for all your help.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? You said aye? Okay. All right, we have a calendar with the adjustments.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. 2025 budget, the next fun item.
Yes. Yay. Started looking up.
But it's good news.
Yes.
It's very good news.
Yes.
All right, if you go ahead and go to the next slide, thank you. So we have some updated, we, we are in revision three of the budget, and we have some updated numbers. I know the governor just passed along his common ground budget suggestions to the General Assembly. They come back together on the 17th of this month, so that's Wednesday, to start reconvening and discussing his suggestions to the budget. So right now, we're projecting $723,109 from the state. We know we have $400,000 coming to us in local funding.
Thank you.
Additional over last year's amount.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, very much appreciated. So the expected additional funding is $1,123,109. So that's $240,000 less from the original budget that you all passed. So what to do, where to find that money? If we go to this next slide, this is our suggestion for the budget revisions. Keep in the one additional full-time teacher. Again, that's likely to be either a sped position or an additional primary teacher. We're just waiting on numbers to discuss that, but we know there's a need in both areas. It reflects the increase in prep services. The textbook required local match. It already has covered the 2% raise that started in January. It covers a 3% raise beginning July 1st. And then here is where we had $400,000 to improve the teacher pay scale. I'm making a recommendation that this is where we get the $240,000 from, by doing the $160,000 to improve the teacher pay scale. That's in addition to the 3%. We could take 140,000, leave 20,000 to go toward benefits, but take 140,000 and revamp the scale with that money and make this a couple-year project. So that would be the suggestion for if you wanted to keep that work session next week? Next week? I think, yeah, next week. Wow, April's almost over.
Next Wednesday, I believe.
So if we kept the work session next week, we could create some scales, or you all could create some scales on your own, and I collect them and present them at the next board meeting. That part isn't necessarily a rush. We need to definitely probably have them done by June, but as far as hiring goes, Dr. Jones can tell folks, hey, you're going to get a 3% raise, and your health insurance is going to be a little less than current rates, because that's coming up in two more bullets, and there's a good chance you're going to get a little bit more money, too. So that's not. So, that's not like, it doesn't have to be done right away, it just really, really, really should be done no later than June. So, this also includes increasing coaching stipends, finally, five hundred dollars per coach per season. What I just said now, this allows us to match the county health insurance rates, which is huge, so all of our teachers will see a reduction in the rates. It's gonna increase substitute pay from fourteen to sixteen dollars an hour, and then give us those, um, CIP things we had in there, the smaller CIP things. But that's my recommendation for this budget. Oh, wait. Oh, no. Two rates.
What?
Because it would have to be, we do need to, we do want contracts to go out in mid-May. Yeah. Yeah, do you guys feel like coming to work session next week?
Yeah, I think.
Because otherwise, if we waited and updated the scale, then there would have to be an addendum going out like, hey, your contract's going up, and that's just a lot.
And then that means everybody has to have an addendum.
Right, and tracking people down in the summer would be a problem. Yeah, let's not do that. If we can get it done, yeah.
Can everybody be here Wednesday?
What time, what time Wednesday?
I think we said five thir, is it five or five-thirty?
I think we said five or five-thirty. Five? The twenty-fourth at five.
Yeah, five. And we need to have the meeting probably in central office, in the old board meeting room. Because of the concert. Yeah. Do you guys think you can pass around some drafts and work that night and vote on it? Would that be doable?
Are we doing a walkthrough the next day?
You are, yes, to the middle and high school.
Is it possible to do it at the same time, so it's not too? I have a hard time getting there that night, I gotta, I gotta teach in the twenty-fourth, but if we're arguing the walkthrough the twenty-fifth, would it be possible to, I don't know if anybody's scheduled on that.
I'm not gonna be here the twenty-fifth.
Never mind, never mind.
We need to rethink those walkthroughs. Next year.
Can we do the walkthrough that morning, the immediate after walkthrough?
I won't be here at the walkthrough. I had to work. Well, what about another night? Any night but Wednesday night. Y'all wanna meet, it, so how long do we have to have it? A, a lot, like, published?
At least three days.
At least three days? Is that the rule?
Could we do it Monday night?
Can you?
Another.
Yeah, it's Monday, it's coming Monday.
Using the same formulas we use before.
Yeah, that'd be helpful, man. I, I'd like to see one that, I mean, I'll, I'd like to advocate one for, put most of that money toward the senior, senior teachers.
Like, I will, we'll use the same, um, kind of dividing lines that you used before, and just different numbers. We'll use fractions. Yeah. We'll just give you three, thank you, Ms. Patterson, that are very similar to what we have now, the other samples, just the money's lowered, but the same kind of dispersment, how's that? That should make next Wednesday much faster.
And you can be here by six?
Six, I can be here by six o'clock.
You can be here by six o'clock. He can be here by six o'clock. You have to leave at six-thirty. Okay. So, we just have to vote between six and seven? Is that okay with you?
Expedited meeting, session.
So, the other option, because Ms. Patterson has done this for a long time, there's never been a board to vote on the scale.
There's never what?
There's never been a board to vote on the scale.
So, we just see it, we publicize it, talk about it, get in thirty days, we vote a month later.
No, like, as in, she said they're usually just created.
We vote on the budget, they create the scale.
We just kind of went down that rabbit hole with a new initiative, so, she's like, hey, this has never happened.
Yeah, I mean, I was just kind of suggesting if she made several samples and shared them with you, and then you could give feedback to her that's not in a meeting, just email that it's okay, not okay, whatever your suggestions are.
We just can't email amongst ourselves, we email it directly to her.
Right, you still get the same end result, but it's not something that's approved by the board, it's something that she's creating for you, and that way you don't have to have a meeting. I mean, it's up to you, we've never, none of the scales have ever been approved by a school board or really even looked at by the school board. I mean, they would see the overall, um, amounts and know what the percentage of increase was, but not, you know, to that level. It's not saying that you can't do it, it's just with the time constraint that we have, it might be easier.
You guys could all agree to do one that's more dispersed. Again, like Mr. W, if you were all leaning anyways toward a scale, like Mr. Wenge has suggested beforehand, then that could be the one we develop. It's just gonna be a matter of taking the percentage off of each scale, so it's not.
I mean, I think it's kind of nice to come together and agree with the board and the division to say, this is what we want to do with that money, since it's a signal that everybody's on the same page, and we're trying to take care of.
I can't hear you.
Certain, certain teachers, you can't hear me, sorry. I think, I like the idea of coming together as a board, and whether we vote or not, I don't know if we have to, but it's kind of sort of saying, yes, let's, let's move that, this direction, and we could, if we could do that within an hour, if everybody could make that from six to seven, it'd be a good vehicle to do that.
Six to six-fifty.
Six to six-fifty? Six forty-five? If you, if you, if you all had already provided those to us, we could look ahead of time, right? Could we do that?
Right, we'll make three for you and send them to you, just like before, we'll give the same examples.
Yeah, it's just your discussion and giving her feedback. No vote.
And then just roll without scale.
So, Wednesday at six o'clock?
Yes.
Good, that means I don't have to skip out on work early.
I think, I want to, uh, thank the supervisors for working with us through the, the money stuff to help get some of those raises through too.
Agreed.
And just also think, think, Mrs. Cropp, Mrs. Graham, it's a lot of, it's a lot of, there are a lot of versions that you guys have gone through, so thank you very much for all your hard work.
Yes.
We did really start budget season last year, and we started budget season this year, so, thank you.
Alright, and so, one more thing, the next slide, it just shows, um, good news with the way CIP is working now, um, it balances things we want versus money coming in. Um, there's gonna be an additional one hundred and eighty-eight thousand four hundred and twelve dollars that the CIP committee will be able to put toward, um, additional projects, thank to the, thanks to the work of Dr. Simmons with getting that, um, refund back from VACOR and the one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, so.
Okay.
There you go.
Yes, so we need to revise, vote on the revised fiscal year twenty-five budget, and I will open the floor to do so.
Motion to approve the revised fiscal year twenty-five budget.
We have a motion, we need a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? I just want to thank you to everybody, one more time. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? We have a revised budget. And the last thing, if the computer will, one more, one more time, buddy, come on. I just don't have the numbers. Um, the next agenda item is to, um, approve the supplemental appropriation for one hundred and fifty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-eight cents. We received a check from VACOR for the repair of the Wetzel High School boilers in the amount of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-eight cents, and this needs to be added to fiscal year approved budget for CIP projects. Anything else to add, Ms. Graham? Alright, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We need a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Alright. Alright, we made it. Woo. Okay. Anybody have any reports? Mr. Sheets?
Yes, uh, let me get to this email real quick. Um, so, uh, Dr. Timmons' father had passed away, so we didn't have a meeting this past week, however, uh, he did pass forward some notes on some stuff that he had. The Waverly Owl Chiller that we've been talking about replacing, that's complete, staff training, uh, scheduled for today, that should be complete too. And the, the boiler that's supposed to be replaced here in the high school, um, that's the one hundred and eighty-eight thousand that y'all saw, the insurance is paying towards that boiler. It's in storage, and it will be installed as soon as school lets out, so, Riddleburg will be taking care of that. That's the main stuff there. Yesterday, there was an accident out here on twenty-nine, it was a friend of mine, Lucia Weaver, uh, worked with him. He was, uh, one of typically kindest, one of just nicest people. He could talk to anybody, and you could talk to him, and, uh, I considered him a friend. So, uh, please keep his family in your prayers. Hard time, hard time. That's all I have.
Yeah, I feel like I've talked enough tonight, I have nothing else, thank you. Thank you for everybody.
I don't have anything other than, I should've done that at what Charlie just mentioned. Um, Mr. Weaver, uh, did pass away, and I should've done that during, uh, a moment of silence, and I neglected to, so, can we do another moment of silence really quick, please? Thank you. I don't have anything else.
A quick and positive note, I had the privilege of going to the district 4H competition, uh, for our county, and it was absolutely amazing. We had probably, if I'm not mistaken, twelve students from Madison Public Schools up there, and this was like for STEM, speech, table setting, all kinds of other cool stuff. Nine, nine purple best-in-show ribbons were given out that day, uh, and all this stuff will be coming back through the extension office back to it. It was amazing to see these little kids, I mean, some of this, I learned some cool stuff, and, um, some of the kids that were there was, it was, it was really neat to see so many familiar faces, but it was phenomenal. Other than that, I have nothing else to report, but it, it's kind of cool to see Madison succeeding in so many unique ways, so I thought that was pretty neat. I did still need his glory on 4H on that one a little bit, sorry.
As she starts singing. Um, I don't really have anything to say, I think I've talked enough tonight, too.
I'm not gonna keep y'all too long, because I'm ready to go home, take a shower and go to bed. But, yeah, I need some food. We have, I don't have anything too new, only have one thing, or two things that's new, everything else I mentioned last time, but I'll just bring it up again. We have, um, the Madco and Grow Greenhouse Event on May first from eight AM to five PM, that's the opening day, and the hours for that is Monday through Friday, eight AM to three PM. Is that like, they're selling plants? Yeah, I've heard about it, um, people get really nice stuff there. It's, yeah, it's open till it sells out, so.
Makes great Mother's Day presents.
Yep. And then, um, we're having a college night Wednesday, April seventeenth, two days, from, from six PM to six-thirty. It's just gonna be a quick little informational session to learn about planning for college and how you can prepare for the upcoming year if you're new and unfamiliar with that whole process. That will be in the media center, again, on Wednesday, April seventeenth. Everything else, just a review, senior trip and last day of school is May seventeenth. Prom is May eleventh from eight to eleven PM at Renback, and graduation is May twenty-fifth at nine-thirty AM. Oh, nine, not nine-thirty, nine AM. And no complaints, only thing, um, we, uh, we have a lot of study tools like Kahoot and Quizlet and stuff like that, that we use for class and stuff, and it would be easier if somehow, I don't know how this works, if we can just get the premium subscription for those things, because with Kahoot, like, sometimes it's limited to amount of times you can get to it and study it. And, like, we use it for government, but since we don't have, like, the premium subscription, we can only go through it so many amount of times, or so many amount of students can go through it. Government's a hard class for someone who doesn't really understand much about politics, so, like, I need to, like, I'm one of the ones that need to go over, over and over again so I can really memorize it, and, and there's other classes too, but that's just something that a teacher brought up. So, yeah.
Is that, is that something that, that y'all can look into and kind of see?
I'll say, I don't know how that works, but it's what they said.
It's the time of year where Dr. Jones has been asking everyone about subscriptions, so there you go. Alright, I just have a few things, I gave you a handout, um, of reminders for you for end of the year, I just pulled out some key events from all the schools that might be helpful for you to go to, um, starting with, oh, I'm not gonna read all this to you, by the way, but I just want to highlight, you already mentioned the walkthrough next week, that's at eight-thirty, we're starting at the high school and then going to the middle, so start at high school. Senior of the Month in Retirement Banquet is Monday, April twenty-ninth, please come if you can, especially if you've never come, came to the event before, it is really good, it's at six PM in the cafeteria on Monday, the twenty-ninth, so very soon. Um, I, it will make you cry. The other thing, I gave you this invitation, this is for the Heroes Breakfast, um, you're included as one of their heroes, so consider this your, um, invitation to come, it's gonna be you, the Board of Supervisors will also be getting an invitation along with our Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, Rescue, this is at Waverly. The plan is, um, at eight fifteen, the kids will, as our, um, local heroes come in, all the kids will be outside to cheer and be excited, and then the Waverly Dreamers, who presented to you guys earlier in the year, they'll be in the cafeteria helping serve breakfast and, um, showing appreciation to our local heroes. So, that is definitely an event you do not want to miss. And I did want to point out that the Diversity, Opportunity, and Inclusion Task Force were able to watch the Right to Read documentary. It's a very good documentary, we have a copy at central office, so hopefully, like, you guys might be able to watch it at some point. It's about, well, the right to read, it is the title, but it's how that is, the ability to read is one of the, like, life indicators to success, and how can we catch kids up? It is based on telling us how we need to catch up and all do the science of reading, so it's a really good documentary. Um, folks that came to the diversity meeting really enjoyed it, so, and then the rest of events, I won't read them out loud, I'm done.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
Aye.
Aye.